Okay, good evening, everybody. I will call the November 4th, 2025 zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. My name is Jim Went. I am the chairman and just because, just for the sake of the record, joining me are regular members Ben Maiini, Ron Stelmack, and Sarah Harris, and alternate member Margaret Lee. Margaret Lee will be sitting this evening for Christina McPhail, who is absent. We have two items to hear this evening, and I will call those shortly, but for the members of the public that may be joining us, and particularly for the applicants, there are five voting members this evening, and under state law, it requires four affirmative votes. In order to get an approval, so a four to one vote, or a five to zero vote on a motion to approve would be an approval, a three to two vote is a denial. I just want to make sure everybody has that understanding. Our first item this evening is 256 Purdy Hill Road. It's an application proposed variance of section 1.9.9b4 to permit a 12-foot front yard encroachment in lieu of the maximum six-foot encroachment into required yard for unroofed steps. And section 1.9.9b5 to permit a 41-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required minimum 50-foot for roof porch. Owner Dominic and Beth Luca are the, Luca's are the representatives here. Just if you are, just unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and explain your proposal to us, please.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say we are proud owners of our Monroe home and have loved living here for 20-plus years. Our house was built in 1957, well before today's zoning and building codes. The front entry has always been exposed to rain and snow, which has caused repeated water damage over time. We have replaced three exterior doors and continue to have rotting hardwood in the foyer and living room. To protect the entryway and improve safety, we began building a small portico. We now understand that a permit was required before starting, and we are here in good faith to bring the project into full compliance. The current regulation allows a two-foot overhang, but that distance doesn't cover the existing steps or protect the entry from the weather. The structure we built is modest, just large enough to prevent water from entering in to eliminate ice building up on the stairs. It is consistent with the scale and character of the neighboring homes and helps preserve the overall look of the street. This variance represents the minimum relief needed to make the entry safe, functional, and durable. It supports Monroe's goals of maintaining safe, well-kept homes and protecting property values. We care deeply about our home and community and simply want to preserve it responsibly. We appreciate the board's time and consideration, and we respectfully ask for your approval to complete this project properly and in full compliance with town regulations. Thank you.
And just for the record, I'm assuming that was Mrs. Luca.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And I'm here to. Thank you for your presentation. I can't see any of the board members, so if any board member has any question, please go ahead and unmute yourself and just go ahead and ask the question. But please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Margaret Lee. Excuse me, I'm all froggy tonight. I'm just wondering, is the, is the walkway in front of the house pre-existing? Is that already there?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that is the walkway being expanded further towards the street in any way, or is that?
Uh, no, the only thing we're doing is going over the stairs.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for that answer.
No problem.
Hi, this is Ron Stelmack. On the drawing, it shows proposed roof over landing four foot. And are you indicating that you'd like to extend that an additional three feet to cover the stairs as well?
Uh, what we're doing is off the house, the existing stairs go off four feet, so total. So we're just looking to go over the stairs just to cover the landing.
Making the entire length of the roof seven feet?
No, uh, it's only gonna be a seven feet long. It's just gonna be just enough for the doorway.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Margaret, again, I'm a little confused here, and I apologize. So the portico that you're currently building, it is going to go over the stairs, or is it just going over the landing?
Just over the landing. There'll be, there'll be two steps going down, but those will not be covered.
Sure, okay, got it. Thank you.
Anybody else, Ben or Sarah, have any questions?
Uh, Ben Maiini, no questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, I will open this up. I don't know if there's anybody, members of the public. If there are any members of the public joining us on this meeting that wish to be heard on this matter, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to ask any questions or make any comments you might have. I can't see who's in the participant list, so going, going once.
Yeah, I've not seen any hands raised.
What's that?
I'm not seeing anybody's hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we will then, without any other questions or members of the public, we will close the hearing on this matter. Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Luca, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move next to, uh, we will move next to 23 Chadwick Court. This is an application for variance of section 3.6.7 to permit a 21-foot rear yard setback. It'll require a 30-foot minimum in section 1.9.9b to construct a patio 11 feet from the property line in lieu of the required 10-foot setback uh, on side for rear yards without extending the patio off the building for the installation of an ingrown pool. This matter, as you recall, I don't think Sarah was with us last time, but this matter was denied at the last meeting. So I will ask the applicant or the representative to explain their proposal and what may have been changed since the last meeting. Is there anyone here regarding 23 Chadwick Court?
Yeah, yes, I apologize. I had to unmute my phone. This is Justin, a owner of, or one of the owners at the 23 Chadwick Court. And I want to thank you guys for the opportunity here to come back and see if we can get this approved. What has changed from the previous application is that we have moved the pool five feet to the, to the east of, of 140 Guinea Road, and so we're now 21 feet from the setback line. This, I guess I could say that our, our yard is somewhat unique because we have ledge that we're moving into on the east side, which is to our neighbor. And we have ledge behind us, and so we were trying to prevent them having to go further into the ledge with the pool. And um, so I guess what makes this more unique is that the property that we are encroaching in on, 140 Guinea Road, um, that is a property that is zoned as R2, and um, as you guys know, the usual setback line for R2 properties is 30 feet. If that property was a RR zone property, like, like our property, the setback line would be 15 feet. Um, what also makes this property unique is that it has been a vacant lot since 1980. And um, the current lot is, um, it can't have a structure built on it because it does not have 150 feet of frontage on Guinea Road. That property is just gonna sit there for, until someone else takes it, one of the neighboring properties decides to adjoin it. Um, so we're kind of asking to see if we can use the 21 feet as opposed to going further into the ledge and um, that's, that's the proposal.
And this is, and as you said, this is five feet further from the property line than the previous version of the proposal.
Correct, yeah, the original proposal was, was 16 feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Is there, is there an opportunity, are, are we able to share our screens? Because I could, I have Ariel that might be able to be more useful to the members of the board, kind of see the property layout. I know, we did drop off some topographic maps, and I don't know if, if all the board members have the, have that material with them or not.
Yeah.
I have, I have, Margaret.
Okay, I could try to promote you to a panelist and then to a co-host, and with that, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, all right.
You'll have to accept becoming a panelist.
Okay.
All right, perfect.
All right.
Now, make you the co-host, you should be able to do that now, co-host. So you should be able to share your screen now as a, as a co-host.
Okay.
Perfect, excellent.
Uh, hopefully, hopefully everyone can see. So our property is, is right here. This is 23 Chadwick Court. This is the property that we are encroaching in on, 140 Guinea Road, and as you can see here, here is all the ledge along the east side of the property and coming down. The property kind of goes down a cliff with all this ledge right here, and as you can see, we've got the protruding ledge coming out of the, out of the yard. And so what we're trying to do is just avoid having to go further down into this area here, where this area over here seems to be a little more, um, more dirt and soil, as opposed to over here where it's more rock. And so um, kind of help with the visual of what we're working with here and seeing the property that we are encroaching in on of 140 Guinea Road. I'll, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you for that. I'll ask the same drill, since we can't see each other, if any member has any questions, please speak up. And once again, this is Jim Went for the record, please introduce yourself so we know who's, everybody knows who's speaking, so.
Um, this is Margaret Lee. Again, I went out and rode around the area. And of course, it is, um, it's nothing but a, some houses on, on top of a very large, um, ledge hill, basically, with the applicant's house being the highest one and others slightly lower, but it's all nothing but ledge and rock. What I saw from Guinea, I saw a house that seemed to be fairly close to yours or to actually where, what the, the rear, where the pool was going to be. And that just have been, I may not have seen correctly, but it did appear that there was a house somewhat close to the edge of what would be the pool itself. I don't know if that was the Farrell's property. Was their house there?
Uh, you know, I am, I'm unsure of which owner. I guess if I can share my screen again, we can maybe see the length or.
Yeah, you need to, you need, if you're speaking through your phone, you need to mute your computer or either mute your phone, one or the other.
Okay, there we go. Just, okay, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, if you could share your screen again, that would be great.
Sure, let me promote.
Yeah, because then we can kind of see which properties.
Yeah, because I could look directly up from Guinea, and I think I could see your house because it's at the top. But I was looking past a house that was on the hill and looked like it might be close to where the pool is. And I don't know if that was the Starks or if that was the Farrell's. And there's a reason for my question, so.
Yeah, the closest would be the Starks. That would be 144 Guinea. Uh, the pool would be at this location right here.
Okay, how far could you tell us, please, is the, the pool itself from the Stark's house? Do you have any idea?
Uh, let me look, um.
I just did.
I did not have anything.
I did a quick measurement using the GIS.
Thank you.
From the prop, the rear property line of 23 Chadwick to the back corner of 144 Guinea, it's approximately 238.78 feet.
Okay, then I have a question in terms of how you're going to, how would you be planning to excavate the earth in the midst of nothing but rock and she, rock and, and ledge? How would you plan, how, what, by what means would you be doing?
That would be, uh, I gotta, I gotta defer that to Kevin, our project manager, um, who would have more information on the excavation of that.
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, yeah, my name is Kevin Cohen from the J. Simmons, on behalf of the applicant. So where the pool location is now, even though we moved it another five feet, um, it, from looking at it, it's mostly on, uh, you know, soils of dirt and grass and, you know, just a budding, uh, outcropping of ledge uh, towards the east side of the property. Um, but that's, you know, pushing it as far as we can with, you know, without going into that big area of ledge that he kind of put the cursor over.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the most practical, logical, and probably the only logical spot where the pool can go. Um, by the looks of the property and, and least detrimental to the property of, you know, keeping up the character of the yard and trees and blasting and all that.
Okay, so what would you, what, what means would you be using to excavate? Would you be blasting?
No, we would use an excavator.
In rock crushers? Just, you could explain that, please.
Yeah, we would just be using an excavator. Um, and then if, if there was rock and we had to use, uh, we would attach a rock hammer onto the excavator um, if needed, depending on how deep the rock was, you know, the depth of the pool might not be as deep because of the rock. But the plan would be to use, you know, a pretty big size, like a 315 excavator, which is about a 30,000 pound excavator.
All right, so this would be a, rather, it would be sort of a traumatic.
It's the, the normal, the, the normal excavation that we would do on that size pool.
Certainly, okay, okay. I, I recognize that further debate would be during discussions, so that's the end of my question for that.
Jim Went, for the record, I just, I just again want to confirm that my understanding is you've, the, the reason you're looking for relief is because you've cited this to the extent you can without expecting the need for blasting. And if you had to move the pool to further, you would anticipate you'd have an issue with requiring blasting or, or further hard excavation into the rock.
Yeah, so if you're looking at this map, kind of that tree line and, and ledge line, any, anywhere along that furthers, all outcroppings are rock. So we're, we're trying to keep the pool, I don't know if you can see the playground set there. We're trying to keep it, you know, more in the grass there where there's no signs of rock besides that one outcropping, uh, you know, there. But that's, that's really the only logical spot we can put it, so we don't have to, you know, deal with blasting or, or major construction, excavation, and, and multiple machines coming there and stuff like that.
Back to Margaret again then, please. Um, as you can see, the ledge is continuous, all that striation of rock. It doesn't just stop because you happen to have a green space. So that to me would indicate that that rock ledge is going underneath the grass, such as you can see it, correct?
No, so the elevation there is actually a bit of a slope from that ledge outcropping to where the playground is. So when we set the pool, we're probably gonna be about two to two and a half feet above what the playground's sitting on. So the excavation in that area is also minimal, um, just because of the slope where we build, we'll rebuild around it. So comparing it to the excavation, as you push further into the rock, it's much more depth and ground.
So you, have you dug holes or run testing equipment to see exactly how far deep you can go?
No, I don't think we're allowed to do that, you know, without any permits.
All right, okay. So basically, we don't know how much, how far down it is, correct, before you start hitting rock?
Right, we have to dig, but we are again, only going down, you know, between two to two and a half feet to get to the shallow and shelf height where that playground, that is. So there is top, there is grass growing there, so there is gonna be a layer of topsoil and a subsoil before you hit the ledge.
And how deep would the pool be?
At its deepest. The, at the deep end, the plan is to get six and a half feet.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Ben Maiini. Uh, the 140 property there, the R2, what makes it an R2? Is this a question for Thomas or the applicant? Do we know why it's an R2?
It's in, it's a residential and farming two zone. The two just represents the minimum acreage required for a new parcel to be in existence, essentially.
So is this technically a building lot or no?
Well, you're talking about 140 Guinea?
Yeah, 140 Guinea.
Point six, um, not, technically, it doesn't have the required street frontage to be an actual buildable lot. They would most likely need a variance in order to get the building frontage reduced, but as it sits now, 140 Guinea is not a buildable lot because of the street frontage requirements.
So it's just open space, basically, at this point?
Pretty much.
And if it was an R1, it would be a 15-foot setback? Is that correct?
And 23 Chadwick is in an RR zone, residential, recreational, those side and rear yard setbacks are 15 feet.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ron Stelmack. Um, I did visit the site, drove up the driveway and walked around the front of the house. Looked around the corner to see what that rock situation looked like. Um, and from the backside of the house in the driveway, it's quite evident that where the pool is now proposed to go is the only place where it's going to fit. Um, the, the lay of the land simply does not permit moving it one way or the other. There's just not the latitude to do that. Uh, in other words, I'll concur with the project manager and with the property owner that they've now presented a case where it has no other alternative. Uh, if there's going to be a pool at all, that's where it goes. Now, the property, uh, the, suppose, the non-buildable lot that, uh, abuts close to the pool, there's a pretty steep drop-off at that property line. Uh, so at some point, if somebody was to build, they would be building some distance away from that property line toward the, uh, frontage of the lot. From the standpoint of, uh, the rest of the property where, as we're looking at this drawing where it shows shaded sort of gray, uh, that's a pretty steep drop-off. It is rock. Uh, it just simply locks everything into the small area where the house and the backyard presently exist.
I guess, you know, Margaret, again, I guess because we are the Board of Appeals and the defining, define, defining question as to whether permit a variance is need, and that means actual need, not want. So could you explain, please, if there is an actual need or if this is really a want?
I, I would, if I may, Jim Went, for the record, I would respectfully suggest that need really isn't part of our equation. It's whether or not there's, there's a unique circumstance relative to this property uh, that prevents the applicant from otherwise complying with the regulations. And that's, and we can, we can discuss that in deliberative session, but I don't know that that's really a, you know, a question for, for the applicant. It's a pool. Um, I mean, no one, I, just intuitively, I would say no one's required to have a swimming pool, but.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's, it's for, this is for entertainment purposes, um, you know, and, and for health and, you know, so I can't. Is it needed? No, I mean, no. This is us trying to add value to the home and take advantage of, you know, what space we have in the backyard to add entertainment, you know, for our kids and, and for health. And so, um, yeah, this is, I, I can't say it's a need. This is clearly just a want. And what we're trying to do is, you know, utilize the space that we have along with, you know, being responsible and respectful to, to our neighbors without having to blast or to encroach on anyone's property, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions?
What do you feel the ramifications would be if you did, in terms of the topography of the land? If you did have to blast or bring in heavy duty excavators after all?
Um, from, from, from the owner perspective, for myself, um, I'm looking to avoid blasting. Um, I, I feel that if we have to blast, that we have the potential of damage to the primary residence. And so I would probably, if we end up having to go down the path of blasting, I think that we would probably, um, pull the plug on, on the project because I, I, I'm kind of against the blasting of it. And so, um, but in terms of other heavy equipment, I'd have to defer the cabin to, you know, to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, um.
In terms of what, what type of system.
Yeah, this is, this is Kevin, but yeah, so if we did have to blast, you know, we do have to go to the neighboring properties and get an insurance sign off. And it is, you know, it is a big detriment to the property and to the neighboring properties that would induce some stress because they do have to, you know, have their insurance sign off and everything on, you know, us blasting. So that, I don't think they would, they would want that.
Thank you for addressing that because that was my concern. We've had episodes, well, never mind, I won't go into it. That was my concern.
Okay.
What would happen to your neighbors?
Okay, I'm gonna repeat what we did on the last application for the sake of the record. If there's any other members of the public that are present that wish to be heard, please unmute yourself uh, and let us know that you're out there and wish to be heard on this matter. Going once, going twice. Mr. Noonan, do you see anybody's hand up?
Nobody's hand is up.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Do you want me to read the public notices into record?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's necessary, but thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we will close, um, file 1437, 23 Chadwick Court, and that closes the public hearing portion of our meeting. Our next is deliberation and determination of these two applications. We will go back to the beginning, 256 Purdy Hill Road, which is the porch overhang. Um, just for the sake of discussion, can somebody make a motion on that application so we can discuss it?
Sure, Margaret Lee, I'm making a motion to approve the application of 25, 256 Purdy Hill Road for a, uh, a cupola over their front steps.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Not a cupola, a porch over their front, roof over.
We got you.
A cupola might be.
So a motion to approve by Margaret, is there a second to that motion?
This is Ben Maiini. Ben Maiini, I second.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded, so Margaret, go ahead, the floor is yours if you wish to say anything beyond what you've already said.
I'll take back the cupola.
Gotcha.
No, I have nothing further to add. I think it's a perfectly reasonable request. I too, in a, in a past, had a house with a front door like that, and I had the entire, had to replace the entire footing for the front, front, front of the house because of it. So I fully empathize.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else have any comments before we, we vote?
I concur with Margaret. I also visited the property, and that little overhang over the door will just be imperceptible to the rest of the neighborhood. No impact on the rest of the neighborhood at all.
Yeah, I'm support, I'm, I'm, uh, Jim Went, I'm, I'm, I am prepared to support this application as well. Unless there's any comment from either Ben or Sarah, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve, I gotta, I gotta do a roll call vote since we can't see each other. Um, so Margaret, um, yes.
Yes, I approve.
Ben?
Yes, I approve.
Ron?
Yes, I approve.
Sarah?
Yes, I approve.
Yeah, Jim Went, I also approve. That's a five to zero approval. Thank you, folks. The next item is, now that I've lost my screen here, 23 Chadwick Court. This is the re-application. This is the re-application for the relocation of the pool. Again, for purpose of discussion, um, does anybody willing to make a motion on this application?
I'll move that the request for variance be approved as requested.
Thank you. Ron, is there a second to that motion?
Ben Mayne, I second it.
Very good. Uh, go ahead, uh, Ron, if you have any other thing, any, anything to say, the floor is yours.
No, not that I didn't say earlier in that there really is no place else to put that pool. Uh, if it's going to go in at all, it's going to fit where it's now been presented as, uh, on the plans. From the standpoint of neighbors, um, if I recall correctly, I don't think any other neighbor would have a view of that pool because of elevation changes. Uh, so it should have no impact from there. Basically, uh, if, if the variance is going to be approved, then there's no place else where it could go. I'm inclined to go reasonable use of property and I'm likely to vote positively on this.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Went, for the record, I, I, I agree with Ron's statement. I, I did uh, vote in the negative the first time. Uh, I do appreciate the applicants taking another look at this and moving it five feet farther from the property line. So it's now uh, twenty-one feet instead of the sixteen that it was. Uh, I do think there's some unusual topographic circumstances here that rise to the level of hardship, uh, that would, uh, that we can hang our hats on here. Um, and I, I also uh, on further review, and I do appreciate the sharing of the screen, I think it's evident that there's really not going to be any negative impact uh, twenty, uh, adjoining neighbors. So I do appreciate the applicant's redesign and I'm, and I'm prepared to support this application as well.
It's Margaret. I'm very hesitant to approve it. And the reason why is the, um, the possible destabilization of the rock ledges, the ramifications of, um, blasting if it became necessary, certainly heavy ex, excavation equipment. The tremors do travel a very long way and certainly downhill. We've had an instance before here in Monroe where an approval was made of considerable, um, blasting and shoveling and everything. And someone's house was severely damaged and they had no recourse. No, they were able to recover nothing from the town or from anyone else. So this would be my concern in this kind of an issue where rocks touch other rocks. It's not like an isolated place. And the tremors do go down. And while it may not damage the house above, it may very well damage down below further on. So, um, that, that's, those are the basis of, um, my, um, and besides which, you know, that triangular property could still want to be developed on, but that would be after the fact so that they wouldn't be undergoing these issues. Um, so anyway, that's the reason for my, uh, I'm going to say, I'm going to deny it because of those concerns. Because once the excavation started and once the heavy, heavy equipment started pounding, it, you know, the stuff can happen.
Fair enough. I understand your concern. Uh, I got the sense from the applicant that, uh, they don't want to do blasting. And if it came to that, they would probably scrap the project. But that's up, that's up to them. I, and I do appreciate your concern, uh, Margaret. Any, any, any other comments before we vote, Ben or Sarah?
Uh, this is Ben Mayne. I, I agree with, uh, Jim and Ron's view on this. Um, I think the issue is really the one forty Guinea Road. Um, it doesn't sound like it's a building lot, really, unless they do some major things there. And if it was a RR, it'd be a fifteen foot setback. Um, so under those conditions, I, I'm, I'm leaning towards approving it.
Okay. Any comments, sir?
Sure. Sarah Harris, um, I'm also in favor of approving the application, um, specifically, um, mimicking Ben's comments that, um, I think they, the applicant has made a strong hardship argument. They've came, they've come back a second time um, and, and reduce the, um, impact to the setback. Um, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of ledge. Um, this is the only spot where it really can go. Um, and the adjoining property at one forty Guinea Road, it's, it's, it can't be an existing home on its own, even if the other properties to the side of it were to adjoin it. There's, um, significant um, space between those existing properties to this pool, um, that I, I think, and, you know, the spirit of the the setback, um, is reasonable. And, um, you know, given that delineation between the RR and the R one and sticking with, sticking with the sixteen foot setback, I think the applicant's done a good job of of finding a fair, um, middle ground and establishing the hardship.
Okay. All right, with that, I will call for a vote. Again, we'll do a roll call vote again since we can't see anybody. Um, so the motion on the table is to approve the application. Uh, I will vote yes, Jim Went, Margaret.
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that is a four to one approval. Thank you. Um, moving on to the other items on the agenda, I know we can't, since Christina is not with us, we can't do the organizational meeting and election of officers. Um, Sarah, I'll recap. You were not present last time. We did kind of talk about meeting in person. Um, Christina had some personal concerns about her availability to meet in person. In, uh, summing up the discussion was, I think the majority was in favor of uh, meeting in person to the extent that we can with, as long as there's an opportunity for remote participation. So that if you cannot attend in person, you can still attend as we are attending tonight, uh, and, and still participate in that fashion. I don't know if you have an opinion one way or the other on that, uh, but, uh, if, if, if we go back in person, it will be conditionally on there being the ability to attend remotely as well.
Thank you for recapping that for me. I think that's fair. Um, if we could meet in person, that would be great. Um, but certainly things come up and make that difficult at times. So having that flexibility, um, I think it sounds very fair.
Me too. Um, here in Northbrook, we do hybrid media. Actually, I'm sorry. In my photography club, we do hybrid meetings all the time. And it works out just great. People can't attend, but they can attend remotely and enjoy the process and be part of it. So I'm in, fully in favor of hybrid.
Yeah, if there's, if there's something positive that came out of COVID, it was our ability to do, uh,
Absolutely.
online and now hybrid meetings. So I think we're, we're all adept at doing it. All right. So I think that's the sense of the board is the way we want to go to so to as soon as, as it reasonably can be accomplished from the staff's perspective uh, on setting that up, uh, we will move forward. I know that Kathleen is on, uh, maternity leave. So whenever the dust settles, uh, on that, we can, we can move forward. But it's helpful to have the sense of where everybody's at with that. So I, I appreciate that. And I thank everybody's, uh, for their, for their comments on that. Unless we have any other business or anybody has anything else to say, uh, I will
I think we have to.
adjourn the meeting.
I just have one, it's Margaret, I just have, just one thing to say, and I want to thank so much the folks at, at twenty-three Chadwick Court and their, um, architect for providing all the aerials and everything. I thought they were absolutely fantastic and really very, very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I skipped over the meeting minutes. Um, um, does anybody have a motion or, or to consider the minutes of our last meeting on October the seventh?
A motion, uh, this Ben Mayne, a motion to approve as presented.
Seconded, Margaret.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, uh, for bringing that up. So the motion to approve the minutes is on the table. Again, I'll go for a roll call vote. Uh, Jim Went, uh, yes, Margaret?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Sarah, presume you will abstain since you were at the last, not at the last meeting?
That's correct, abstain.
Okay. All right. So that is a four to zero to one approval of the minutes. Thank you, uh, Mr. Noonan, for reminding me that I skipped over the.
Of course.
Uh, a- anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, mentioning Kathleen, I just want to let everyone know she had the baby on October thirtieth.
Yo!
Yep, the family is healthy, happy. Connor Bernard is the baby's name. And, uh, Kathleen actually delivered in her car on the way to the hospital.
Oh, my God!
Get ready for a story when she gets back.
Well, I'm sure there's a story there. I'm glad all is well. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all for, uh, presence, your time and attention. Then, uh, have a pleasant evening. I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.